Sort of business on the agenda is the caller for the current interest in carrying the agenda. Well, I haven't heard any on it. We'll go on to the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions? I have one, the tax rate by law two thousand twenty-three oh two, like to add this nine point one. The other additions or deletions?
I have the park, skateboarding park.
Skateboard park?
Yes.
And what are you just looking for?
Enough data to find one.
Okay, um, Donna, you have anything on that? Do you want to? If you want, we can look at the end. We can discuss it just at the end if you want from just in the gallery part.
All right, we can do that.
Just about, can we set deadlines and stuff like that still at that point in time? Should we set a deadline on that? It's almost June.
Just that, you know, I mean, if you don't, there's no details here. We don't want to blindside anybody on that. The administration doesn't have any information on it.
I mean, I could, well, he can speak to this in the agenda. This is not appropriate time, but we can sort of call the
We can certainly only come before we go, before we go into camera, before we talk to it.
Yeah. No, I know I've asked about it and I know it's being addressed, but it's a concern.
Good. Anything else? Not an, uh, motion to accept the agenda with the addition of nine point one?
Make the motion to accept the agenda with the addition of nine point one.
Favor? That is carried. All right, adoption of the previous minutes, uh, the regular meeting, um, April twenty-fifth and the, uh, made the oil, made the ninth and the May thirteenth spring budget adjustments. Are there any errors or omissions that anybody has in there? Motion to, uh, adopt the minutes as presented there?
I'll make the motion.
In favor? That is carried. So, um, next is the delegation for Cindy Markert or the water bill. Is she gonna, is she going to show up? Or do we want to discuss it without her?
Okay. Um, usually with, uh, with a registered delegation, we usually like to have the person here to speak to it. And she's written, she's written a, a letter. Uh, we have an RFD and they're indicating administration position. Usually we'd like to have the person who is concerned about it, address counsel, per.
I mean, uh, we can reschedule a later date, but I think that, you know, we've got all the information. Can we just discuss it and then make a motion on it? I think it's pretty well straightforward as it is. Would you like to speak to it, please?
Um, yes, but actually, if, uh, if it pleases your worship, I'll turn it over to, uh, Mr. Daphne.
Okay, thank you. Um, so Cindy has the renters in there and they wrapped up the water bill and rest her house. She said the last thing about renovating it. Um, and the bylaw, it doesn't say that you get a re-creed from the water bill, whether you're using it or not using it. So, um, she has a water bill for six months. Um, I offered to waive the penalty because, um, she had been made inactive, so she wasn't getting a bill. And then when I discovered that she was inactive, I put her back to active and she should have been active the whole time. So, I offered to waive the penalty for late payments because it wasn't her bill. And it wasn't her fault that it was put inactive. Um, so I believe she came in on Okay, four weeks ago Friday and she paid the bill. Um, as she had asked me if I could waive it, I said, I don't have the authority to waive your water bill. I have to come to counsel. Um, so I, I was surprised what you wanted to do, but.
And how this bill is becoming active, who did that?
Um, well, when she got the water shut off, because it was shut off due to non-payment. But even if it's shut off due to non-payment, it's okay. So, I don't know how it happened before I, prior to Well, six, yeah, the middle of the month.
So, yeah, so really, when it comes down to these things here, I mean, always we have the bylaw where it goes directly to the owner. It doesn't go to the renter because we're not going to start chasing renters all over the world. So, I mean, it's their responsibility to collect it from renter.
Yeah.
And I, I, it's always tough to pick a call on these here, but I mean, really, once his renter, she should have came to us and said, shut it off.
She was getting the bill every month. I would offer fourteen hundred dollars, like, she would know that it was.
It's, it's like that for everybody. So, I don't know if anybody else had any discussion on it. I don't, I really don't think.
My understanding is that the landlord is, is always aware that they're responsible for any outstanding amount.
There's still a fee regardless of whether you are inhabiting the house, still the fees for delivery and such, even if there is no usage, there is those minimum payments regardless.
Yes.
Yeah.
I, I, I agree. I mean, it's, it's, it's the way it is. And I mean, you can't, uh, people do pay their bills. I mean, if we, we make an exception, then the next thing you know, we've got people that remain, uh, they're going to want the same thing. It's unfortunate. So, when you're talking about the penalties part?
Yeah, so she, because when we did jail her finally after six months, her bill was five hundred and something dollars. Um, so I think that was, I'd have to look up the accounts.
Like how many dollars, how much, how many dollars?
So, it would have been a fifty dollar penalty that first time, so I offered to waive that for her. Um, and I wasn't here when she came in and paid it, but, um.
I, I think it's, I think it'd be fair to waive that under the circumstances, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't go on the other.
And going inactive, does that mean she did not get a bill?
She did not get a bill for six months. Well, and actually, nobody doesn't get a water bill. I think the only person who has a bill is the people who have had fire. Clearly, there's no house there.
You know, I mean, they've done some great things on the place. They've cleaned it up.
Yeah, it's beautiful.
That's right, that's right beside the seniors center, right?
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not a picture. It's on, it's on the first.
So, I think it's fair to say everybody's on the same page here. We'll waive the fifty dollars and then get a motion to that effect. Thank you, Donna. In favor? Carry. Okay, uh, next item, six point two RFP, Sergeant Moore. Good to see you again.
Well, thank you for having me. I appreciate the, the input and the time I came to speak with the council. So, very much. I don't want to take up too much of your time there, but I did submit, uh, our most recent quarterly update there that I just wanted to touch on quickly. Okay. So, um, our fiscal year came to an end at the end of March. So, I'll just sort of touch base on the, uh, priorities that we had for the previous fiscal year. They are going to be the same priorities for the upcoming year as well. And these priorities are based off of information that comes from attending meetings or these, uh, community events, town halls, those type of things, again, feedback from especially the public to find out what's important. These priorities are not set by, uh, our headquarters or anything like that. It's just all specific to each what they feel are the priorities for the area based on. And they tend to be the same, uh, for a rural type of area. So, the first one was the crime reduction and under that, um, just talk about what we've got to try and, uh, set goals and monitor those. Uh, see if we're, uh, reaching those goals throughout the year. So, the two that we looked at are offender checks and the hotspots. So, our, and I'll get to the stats here in a little bit here, but, uh, over the previous fiscal year, our property crime was, uh, was down, uh, three hundred thirty percent, I believe it was for that, for that year. And that's, I don't attribute that mostly to our members going after our particular offenders and the fact that we had a number of them, uh, in jail over that timeframe on a regular basis. Uh, so as a result, like I always say, if I could get rid of sixteen people in my jurisdiction, the crime would have been so gone. Uh, but we did have a number of those ones that were in jail for longer periods of time. And as a result, that really brought down our property crime. Uh, so where we really were able to do, it's two calls. One's going to be, the way we're doing here is going to be offender checks. Uh, those are going to be people, the, uh, public offenders that are in conditions, especially peruse, where we check them on a regular basis. And if they're not in their home, that's a criminal offense for them and we will lay charges on that. We provide them with a time ourselves or we'll put a warrant for their arrest and put out anybody else in the, in the country and the other source of, of harassment and, and, and actually better. So, our offender checks, the goal was three hundred and seventy and we did four hundred and forty-seven. Uh, the hotspot checks, those are the ones where we're going around and doing the physical type of patrols. Uh, we are limited to use our state of the court, right? Um, but we apply subject to, quote, uh, they're all marked vehicles. So, the expectation is that, you know, we may not get a whole lot of calls in that, especially but the expectation is that the members will be doing patrol in smart vehicles, uh, for a, for a long time area. So, so we monitor the, um, the goal was sixteen thousand seven hundred. We did just under fifty thousand. So, we're a little bit low on that, but I think that having that, it's always difficult to, what we prevent. But I think just having that, you know, there's an expectation for how long it takes to, uh, for that visibility. The next priority is, uh, communicate effectively. Uh, like we said, what we're monitoring that are the meetings that we had here. Um, we said with the, uh, community events at the end, uh, as well as town halls. So, that's a priority for myself as well as right up to the highest levels of the state. Uh, so the expectation is that we'll have, uh, two town halls, you know, town halls here. I can move those around, so I'll have those that, yeah, the fiscal year and year, the fiscal year. So, the, the last one that we held was, uh, Buck Lake. Uh, that one there had over sixty people that attended that. That's one of the highest numbers that has attended in the town hall in the province, including the cities and stuff there. So, sometimes when you go to these more remote type of areas, you do get pretty few people that will scrub up there. Yeah, yeah, maybe it was just something that was happening. So, they all decided they might as well come and see me. Uh, but it was very well attended, um, and we, we received a lot of good feedback there. But like you said, I've had the authority to, uh, threaten, uh, for, uh, those types of ones. So, I just keep on moving that around and I'll make sure that everybody's aware of it. And then I also, it's not only just you, you can attempt to bring somebody else in, uh, as well to give, uh, a type of presentation. Um, that one there, a lot of crime reduction team had, uh, to assist. And so to talk about what they do, I've had, uh, the authority, uh, we've had the Crown Prosecutor come in. Different groups, uh, whoever happens to be, uh, people that would be important. Lots of times these questions are coming up in there. Well, yeah, we know that you guys do, we appreciate it. Uh, but then it's a catch and release program. I guess it's important to, to bring the Crown Prosecutor to national department there. So, that was helpful. Uh, third one is employee wellness and that's just the one that's internal one. Uh, just making sure that we're being super members and, uh, our admins officers, well, for all of them. And if there's, you know, help is needed, it's very important. So, I'm going to make sure that, uh, people are getting support and stuff with it. And then the final priority that we had was enhanced urban safety. Um, and this is, uh, in terms primarily to, uh, disability. Uh, the two items that we look at there, check stops and violator contacts. So, the check stops, I, we set a goal of eighty and we did ninety-nine throughout the year. And then the violator contacts, uh, that one there, I started monitoring a little bit differently. So, the numbers were over sixty-five, seven, the goal of a thousand is sixty-fourty-two. But even still with that, I think that it was a very good initiative that was set up, like, in the United. So, that'll be where the members are going proactively, uh, for violators and then, uh, uh, we're not out there, my, my whole attention is not to see how many tickets we write. I want to say that probably ninety percent of their contacts that we have with the public, open, uh, areas being issued. It might be a different one, uh, approval warning and in certain cases, uh, so great. That's not something where the whole call is over there to the other side. I'm trying to, uh, but we just want to make sure that we're out there, visible when the others are in blue lights flashing. Yes, if you're looking at that one violator that you're at full hover, well, help the other people that try to buy or if it's in the night time and you're in a small one, but, um, I would, it's more of a very, uh, relative to that. I can, I can, I'm there as well. Those are the ones that we're looking at. Um, in regards to the stats there, so I'll just touch base on certainly. So, the property crime for, uh, we're going to January to December. So, that's twenty twenty-one of twenty compared to twenty twenty-two. So, that was down thirty-two percent. So, that one's down thirty-two percent. The next one down below that is, uh, other criminal code and that's up forty-one percent. So, most times you like to see stats, especially if our business is going down. This one here, that one, I like to see going up because included in that are the reasons. So, when we go there and like you said, when we come across and go to residence and that person's not there, that there is a charge that we're going to lay. So, we want to see those. If we can have those numbers going up, hopefully it will have an effect on, at a certain point, there'll be a bit of a delay. But the whole point is, hope is that the, uh, property crime then go down. These are the ones that we said, public offenders that are responsible for most of it. Um, however, in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-three, you can see the January, March, so the column there. That property crime now is up thirty-two percent. Still going after those prolific offenders and stuff, so there will be a bit of a delay. But we have had a, a number of these ones decided to settle. Uh, there are, uh, open charges that are before the courts. So, basically, it resulted in the back of the, the public. They just, they're not in custody. They tend upon it just stealing items. So, and we have one that we just, uh, arrested here and he's back in custody a week ago. Um, which should have a significant.
Related to the break-in in the counter?
Yeah, we don't have him, we don't have him charged with that, but if I had to put money on it, I'm going to say it's him. So, uh, but there's not, yeah, there's not enough evidence to charge him with that. Uh, but we did get him that day and another prolific offender of the, uh, utilized or had crew units quite often. There's our crime reduction units, uh, they were up here. They're very helpful to small, uh, as opposed to those, uh, that have their own, like, that I do not. Uh, but they can come over here with, with four, five or six officers. They had done, and that's what I'm, I'd say, nondescript vehicles, put, I think, like, a starter, uh, ready to light, turn on. Um, lax air services, so our helicopter that day. We were able to get, uh, one gentleman in his whole vehicle. All of him takes location from the counter as well as from the ground. And to a, for residents, uh, two stolen vehicles from that location. Then the chase was on. So, that resulted in one vehicle being dumped, one guy ran into the woods. Those, that would be, the next day, other vehicles continued on, ended up moving. Uh, so that was our, I think, prolific offender that we have that's probably responsible for a lot of this stuff. So, both of those gentlemen are now in custody, have that now. So, you have to continuously get to that point where we give enough charges on them and brief them enough that they go back into custody, that they will, like, get back in. So, I think that just having that one person in jail, I think, has a, has a reaction to that crime. Um, just in regards to our, uh, I guess the employees and our personnel, uh, we're doing very well. We have, oh, the threatened attachment, he's threatened one, threatened for one officer, so that's the code here, June, to recruit this, so that won't be full there. But, as of, have that on hold, can never have that. So at the end of June, though, I'm losing an officer, he's just sold his home, so he's been transferred, so that'll create another vacancy. But even having just one vacancy is very good, especially for, for, for president and cabinet, which has more vacancies. So, having one, but I'm working on filling that one as well. And the admin side, we're doing very well, we have all of those. And having those, the admin is a priority, more than having an officer, having the administration staff, they can do so much for us on that side of it. So the reason, the justice, the, 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 yeah, been working to make a very core couple of us, very inefficiently, they do such a better job, and they're excellent. Um, I just want to touch base on just a couple of files of significance here, and just, just to give examples of what we do with here, so I won't go through all of them. But in this one case here, so this Michael Blair, he's, he's, and though these are ones may not be important, but, as I stated before, criminals don't know any boundaries, they do not care, so items are always stolen from one place and over another. But we know that these guys are responsible for the one, if they're correctly considered, I think, that's important, but responsible for a lot of stuff in this area. So, you know, this is, this is an example here where, uh, Michael Blair, located and stolen from Trump government, and sold apartment terror in the area, um, there are other items that he had stolen, reaching a point where he was arrested, so he wanted to put those things out there, but that really matters to them. Um, we utilized, uh, police law services, uh, tracking him after he ran from us under the woods. Um, and then that resulted in charges being laid in his possession, contrary to an order, uh, it just will arrest, field collateral, these orders kind of think, like for police, operate, they're law prohibited, have possession of property, they take their crime, uh, over five thousand dollars a night. So that's just arresting one guy, and that one day, broke the house, so, you know, that , that, that'll be just a daily occurrence. So, by having that one person in custody, you can forget so much crime. Oh, yeah, he's, yeah. Mr. Blair didn't turn out so well. That was very well, you know. Um, yeah, and, uh, another one there, like, and that, that started in the area of Warburg, so, you know, we have prolific offenders, we always sort of talk about them, or the property crime people, but we're seeing more and more of it in regards to fraud, or people that, uh, money, uh, some of these people are very sophisticated at, uh, what they do, uh, they won't necessarily be going and trying to fraud people of thousands or tens of thousands in some cases, but we're seeing, I wouldn't say more and more of it, or if everyone after smaller amounts, they just go after all you, that's the numbers of people. So, if you get the fraud of two or three hundred, four hundred dollars, so this is what this person was doing, they'd put something online, just say, uh, so it's, here's something that happened, and then they would just ask for, you know, for a three or five hundred dollar deposit on that, and then all of a sudden, that, that, go longer, you know, you found online, and the person's answering. So, you know, if you take those two or three or five hundred dollars from people, we don't even get a lot of those calls, and this is a prime example of it, where somebody did call that in, where Officer Trent went the extra step, and, uh, the best of their production order, we were able to get the, uh, um, banking records for this particular sus- from this suspect, only to find out that you could see all of the e-tractors that were coming in for the three and five and seven hundred dollars. And then we were able to reach out to all those people, to the email addresses that they had to the e-tracker, and that's resulted in people from Saskatchewan, Alberta, British Columbia, all being defrauded by the same person, uh, but we have, just here in Alberta, we're only able to deal with, so we, instead of every particular jurisdiction, having to do, they're only, I think, for my whole, my, around area. But, we then Alberta, they decided that, we already have all of these, so, let's just lay all this out this year, so, we had fraud, under five thousand, twelve, all accounts of those, okay, there's proceeds came by crime, well, that was twelve that we found first in Alberta, and then our, so we forwarded that information off to those, uh, areas, for them to deal with that, very, 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 so, you know, a lot of people are impacted by this, so, you know, we, we do need to get these calls, and, so often, you hear, well, now, whether it's property crime, whatever, that's crime rampant in this area, well, we will, so, have that information, then we can go ahead and analyze, start going down, you know, we should concentrate on, and, whatever happens, all of those are very helpful. Uh, like I said, just a couple of more examples that are there, but it's all related to the same thing, so, we use our category, which is, pretty helpful in trying to stem that , uh, crime here in this area. And then as of late, basically, the last couple of weeks, all fires, so, that's what we've been doing, um, that fire, because there were green valleys, it actually started in our area, right, so, we had lots of fires, uh, coming out here, uh, smaller ones, but still resulting in very, very expensive, both for the fire departments as well as ourselves, because it's built, in fact, you're, of, half section, or section of land, and I was one piece, that I went through there, the fire's been, been charged, there was that person, so, and that, all that, just took that, grass on fire, and then, so, I mean, with this rain, it's been much, much better, but some of these fires have been started from, what's it, two novalts, just mowing the lawn, and pitching a rock, and having a spark, that is, that's how, that's why it's started. Certains are pending, we have another investigation going on, uh, over the last area, for the arson, well, which of those, is, is, so, this, that, all, all. Well, that's sort of my presentation.
Thank you very much. It's a bit to see there's lots going on, I guess. Yeah, anybody have any other questions, comments they want to make? Thank you very much for coming in, I appreciate this here, and, uh...
Yeah, anytime, for sure.
Appreciate that. I just want to say, uh, one thing before you go, that, uh, we appreciated that the Gordon Banfford, the accompanying members were there, and, uh, certainly, just having them present, you know, we didn't have any issues, and it's, uh, really nice to, uh, see them there, so thank you very much for...
No problem, I think there were a couple of things that happened there, but they were able to basically manage it, so, that's why I'd rather be proactive with these things, not have a presence, and then just have to deal with the aftermath, that's a lot more work, than being there.
We appreciate it very much, and, uh, and, well, I talked, so...
Is there any exceptions from the past weekend?
Nope, nothing, nothing, you know, there's a lot of people calling, uh, have, are called, uh, people have fires, but, in most cases, they are called, or, or, very loud, but, that's why, yeah, it's, it's, I think, if they said it, it doesn't take very much, uh, all these sparks that are probably, I'm not making, it's all burning, it's, ashes, and, probably around, you know, fire, that, that's all it can take, ashes, that's why it's burning, and, of course, whatever, great, they're getting air, hopefully, that, those, they have fires, it's, and, and, for, halfway in, so, that was just a small fire, that is, last day, two children, that's the only thing, that's, that, that, and when you have that, like, it'll, it'll be, fire calls outside a lot, you're not putting that fire up, it'll be small, there are, somewhere, that's a lot, you're just, you're possibly, or, very, very, uh, managers, uh, so, so...
All right, well, I think that's it, thank you very much, appreciate it, I'm very nice, thank you very much for coming in. If I can get a motion to accept that for information?
I'll make that one.
All right, thank you, all in favor?
Thank you.
All right, new business, eight point one, Ladue County subsidized assisted transportation program for seniors, uh, Seo Don, would you like to comment on that, of course, please?
Hi, sir, can you worship, uh, this was presented by FCSF that are meeting last Monday, uh, before that even, uh, from Ladue County, was, was chatting about it, and this is a pilot project, um, that they want to look at subsidizing, assisting transportation for seniors, and, of course, they doubt that it's their participation, and participation at this time might be just, uh, marketing it a bit, struggling to work a little bit for now, um, because this is a pilot project, so, and, and we can, you know, we can have chat with, uh, see exactly what, what he would like, but, um, they have two eligibility potions here, one is senior sixty-five to seventy-nine, they're eligible for five free round trips, approved by Ladue County for medical appointments, and they can include doctors, and specialists, et cetera, testing, no restriction in place on residency, provided the, the, the county, the village, or, or, kind of, town, or, town authorities, but this is only for this age group, and you'll see the second age group of eighty years and over, um, I know what our, the assessment, um, question was asked, uh, what about folks with medical appointments, or that are disabled, that's not part of the pilot project at this time. So the seniors eighty and over, they're eligible for ten free round trips, approved by Ladue County for the same medical recreational support, and that may include grocery, banking, or related to, so, so different for babies, but, and then additional trips may be offered due to financial or medical means of funding, so, um, it's, uh, it, it speaks to the, uh, other standard college years ago, realizing that rural transportation for folks with medical, etc., is, is, is quite short in the rural area, and, uh, this, they're hoping will build, and they'll be able to, uh, get a big ridership, and get a bigger understanding. So it's gonna, uh, look at this summer, and, uh, it's, uh, they haven't determined our cost, it does come at a cost, and if you choose to participate, we'll determine how the cost will be paid, because we don't know what that's going to mean, and, uh, Mr. Emerson and I can chat about that right now, there's no monetary, uh, requests yet, and now the medico, we have to look at the budget for twenty-four, because the budget is buttoned up now, and, uh, open it for these projects, and I think they understand that. So, it comes with a fairly large background, uh, to, to talk about the, the necessity, and it's interesting, um, I was looking to Ladue City Council, because I was going every week, and much other councils around the province, and they're creating resolution to get more money for infrastructure, despite the thing, because they believe they're fast growing, and the smaller communities, set in the, the, smaller community, darn it's fast growing, don't need to serve, it's daunting, I couldn't believe it. So, it just, it just lends itself to the fact that rural municipalities need to become more adept at, uh, army, uh, army, uh, and, uh, what they want, because they indicate that rural municipalities aren't, decision aren't growing, doesn't need, and I have talked to people from the, the, uh, Auto Way Buck Creek, that would be quite close to Colorado, and right now, they're busy evacuating, because of fire, but, uh, they did say they need, they'd be interested in a new, new public video, to, uh, look at a resolution for council, to, uh, push back on, because, we're short on infrastructure, we're short on services, or, we're short on those practitioners, so, um, that's part of it. So, this is, uh, this is information to you for council right now, there's no financial ask at this point, and, I don't know if I can, thank you.
Um, they, just the only thing was that, it's, um, the driving will be done by drive happiness, and they're going to be quitting out and ask for volunteers on that regard, and then they were also going to look into the insurance aspects, and how that works.
You know, and, well, I wonder whether the vehicle construction has to be something at the council?
Volunteers.
Yeah, it's also volunteer.
It's through drive happiness.
Like Kelmer, Kelmer has a bus, has parked.
What look has a bus?
Yeah, and you're, you're not...
This is, uh, sorry, this is almost like, it's, it's, very, very, yeah. Yeah, I don't know, it's interesting with the insurance, it's a little more than a six-day insurance, trying to determine, uh, because, uh, this is, it's, it's, all right.
All right, so I guess, like, at this time, we're just, uh, motion to, uh, further discuss it with the counties, agreement with that, I think that's what we'll do, yeah. Thank you, John, all in favor?
Sure.
All right. Uh, nine point one, tax file on twenty twenty-three oh two, and this is, uh, maybe something that we have to do every year, uh, Seo, Cindy, would you like to, any comments on that?
Well, based on the budget, that was passed on, uh, May thirteenth, I put together the property tax file on at a principal increase, and so with the segment increases, and the property tax increase, it's probably looking at an acceptable, so, so, then we'll craft some, some language, or, why that is.
The, the biggest part is not, like, ours is only three percent, but, but the assessments from everybody across Alberta, and especially everything, yeah, everybody just lives like a double rabbit, you know, there's nothing, we have no control over that whatsoever.
Plus, in re- in reality, that's the property tax increase that we're, over the nineteen, so, does it comment well the three percent on it?
No, no, just the mill rate, just the mill rate on the second, like, schedule, um, but it doesn't comment in the property tax file on, or, three.
So, uh...
Have her, um, her, if I can read it, and then you have a, that's, there's...
I didn't, I didn't see a she here, but we can do it without it, like, our first second, there's reading, she...
Oh, there is on the...
Is it?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, sorry, on the third year.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, can I get a motion for the first reading of file law two thousand twenty-three oh two? John, all in favor? Eric, can I get a reading, uh, a motion for the second reading of file law two, twenty twenty-three oh two, tax rate? All in favor? And can I get a motion to, uh, provide unanimous consent for third reading? Sorry, all in favor? Eric, thank you, and then, now, we'll go to the third and final reading, and motion to, third reading, John, all in favor? Eric, there you go.
Thank you.
Are ready to go.
A quick question, you wish, when we crack the language, would council like to, we're gonna set up share points, I hope we did that, but, uh, with an email, so we can all comment on it?
Yeah, I, I think, it's, it's good to, for something in the paper there, so...
Sure, well, I did as much as you feel.
All right, uh, eleven point one, the motion tracker update. Seo, don't let you want to go through that, of course?
Um, yes, your worship, thank you very much, so, uh, in, in keeping with council wishes, uh, last year, as you noticed, we had every council motion here, because it was a, an interesting year, and we wanted to make sure that everything was captured. This year, uh, we started with, uh, the motions that require action by administration, although it's, it's cumbersome, so, um, the first one was in, uh, January first, or January twenty-third, motion for, yeah, legal consequence regarding reasonable pipeline easement, that is now complete, and, uh, on, uh, February fourteenth, and, and, all motions that the cost share, rate, and information, and direction, for, for the funding options, that was, that was coming our, our recreation cost center, and, uh, that was complete, and it is, uh, it is, it is, it is, on, uh, the, uh, February fourteenth, three, again, motion for a letter to support, uh, Creek, the hardship, regarding, what that, that was delivered, to Buck Creek, uh, twenty-third of February, thirty, twenty-third of February forty, okay, I got it, motion number three, uh, motion for administration to send a letter to support social, for opportunities, for all the communities, with, with, into, we can send a letter, we got a lovely response back saying, oh, well, from over the current naming, we said a lot more than that, but that was just, uh, on, uh, March twenty-eighth, at the regular meeting, motion to approve the, uh, command of understanding, between the town of Corrie, and the Corrie gets declined from, with, uh, grammatical involvement, and, uh, were corrected, the agreement between the town, the lines, and the, and, 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 on, uh, March twenty-eighth, motion to approve the community of Bloom memorandum of understanding, and that was between the town and C I D, and that was, uh, to keep in mind, with the group agreement, and, 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 on, uh, April eleventh, that community, the whole motion to direct administration to seek consideration, participate in collaborative, uh, with respect to, to the council, and, uh, that is coming up in June, and, uh, restaurants, the, the, and, 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 of course, uh, April eleventh, the whole motion to retain the outset, Cameron, Cameron , and, 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 and,[1424.12]
To have access to our shed. And that doesn't mean kicking us out of the yard. Why couldn't we not consider? Just consider. And obviously, we want to work with council and administration on it. But we want, would like council to consider the idea of, could we not have access to the current location that we currently sit in? Flip our shed around, as an example, because it's right at the back. Flip our shed around so our doors can be seen from the west side of the fence. Then to the backside of it. And come up with a reasonable solution. Where we could maybe put a gate in. Where we could gain entry from the backside. But still allow Public Works to have a secured shed. Because honestly, it is ridiculous. Right now, we have multiple sets of equipment from the weekends. In multiple members of branches. So we're doing double-dated work. And it just makes absolutely no sense. We want to be involved every step of the way with the Forests and Forests. But I don't feel, and none of us in our group feel, that we are necessarily giving an honest understanding of what we do and how we can be of mutual benefit in the community with respect to getting this stuff done that needs to be done. We have nineteen years of history, and nineteen years says we're not actors out there. Yes, there's been incredible change in the last year. I'm not convinced that it was for the good though. With respect to our shed. We have to come up with a better solution, and I know-
Really, what you're saying is you're not happy with the MOU, is what you're saying?
Well, we will work with the MOU, or the MOA, whatever it is. We will work on that agreement as stated in the fall. Where we agreed that we would do a valuation of where we kind of were left. But right now, it's haunting us. And I can guarantee you, not one member is happy about how it's working. So there's an incredible amount of pressure put on our group, which is one hundred percent driven by the old-fashioned community spirit and volunteers. And I really feel that that's being eroded because of this agreement. I really feel that. And I'm pretty confident of members will tell you the exact same statement. So we have to clean it up. Or at least maybe ease up a little bit on the current language to allow us to do what we're good at. And that's, we keep, of course, we shine as best it can. Because that's what you said, it needs some help. Of course, it does need some help, right? And we want to be part of that.
I thought we were all good when I saw the MOU.
Well, it's just hard, right?
Yeah.
We've got lots of moving parts.
Yeah.
Right? And I totally understand what Public Works means. I don't necessarily agree how we're locked out without notice. But I understand the language in the agreement. I'm just not convinced that it's for communities in bloom. And I don't think we should be necessarily not taking measures because probably in the last nineteen years, we have contributed easily between labor and grants and projects. We probably easily contributed over three hundred thousand dollars to the town, of course. So we have value.
I know the CFO, Donna, and CFO of Minnesota, they put a lot of time into this too, you know? And they had some solutions. So I think, I think everybody, any discussion? Yeah, go ahead, Sherry.
So I have a question, because I saw that the plantings are going to be on May twenty-ninth. I think I saw, May twenty-ninth. And then you guys have these thirty-three sponsored planters on top of the town's planters. Are the thirty-three sponsored planters being watered by?
The MOU.
Okay. And then I just was curious about the shed. So the agreement was it would be moved at the end of the season.
Right.
Being the fall.
Yeah, and I know it's, and don't take this wrong. There definitely is urgency to move the shed. And I get that. But it should not be after sacrifice of not, us not having a home. Because we deserve to be placed on, we're just full of land behind a fenced ground. And somebody has to work with us to get this.
And nobody wants your stuff stolen, that's for sure.
Like, we work too hard as a group. And, like, golly, if we have, we want to be right in there helping the community, we really do.
Well, I think, see, Donna, you want to make a comment? I want to put you on the spot here, I know this is all just team on the move for you.
Well, I think I can solve the insurance portion Mr. Rasch talked about. You could certainly have your own insurance. That's not a problem.
We just have to, yeah, we're waiting for it.
Yeah, no, there's no issue for the town. I don't think the town ever wanted to insure.
Well, it just, my respect to MOU and what the language is. They have that WCD. So if you're a medical sit-in, I'll get some, so that, and see if we can do that. It might be more inviting if we take the WCD part out of there under our insurance, if we can do that.
And the-
See, one thing Barry, just, you've got to remember is that, you know, the council, I mean, this, the MOU, MOU was presented to us. And we, yeah, everything was in there, and then we give it back to administration. So they've done their job on it. They put what they were told to put in there. That's something I can say, yeah.
Well, I know there was issues all along with the MOU.
Yeah.
On both sides, because I was invited to their meeting discussing the MOU. And they weren't happy with the MOU.
The shed has been a little bit of where it should be.
It shouldn't have been signed.
And then what would happen? So if it wasn't signed, then what? There would be no community movement.
Because they're thinking, I think, we'll deal with it in the fall. But we haven't had access.
Without the MOU being signed, we were not forced to be funded as owners in the fall.
They were forced into signing the MOU, that's how they felt.
And I, it's just, it's complex. And there's personalities involved.
Yeah.
But I want, I want a functioning MOU that complements both communities in bloom and the town of Forests. And I know we can get there. And we're going to keep battling it out until we figure it out. But that's what I would like, us to just keep working on it with an open mind. Maybe ease up on a little bit of the pressure that's being placed on volunteers. Help us find a shed, if that is the biggest issue for communities in bloom right now.
Yeah, John, so if the council says no, and all kinds of shit is moving, you'd have a spot. Or you can look at that yet.
We have one spot that's outside of a fence compound. We also have another spot that is in a fence compound. It's just it can't, it can only accommodate, in a fence compound, the company are real competitive. Outside the fence compound, we're liable to have our stuff stolen.
And that's somebody else's property.
It's not just a shed and a utility trailer. It's so much more than that. Right? So if the town wants us to be responsible for the handy planters, and they've said they want us to be responsible for all planters, right? For the most part, we're happy to do that. We need a place to put them. We need a place to store them. We have to have an access. And right now, let's, as a prime example, the hall needed our apron. All these people post that, of course, him, to then have to bother administration, you know, for summoning them. Apron. Right? Do you know what I mean? The seniors want to use our fifty-fifty sign. And the apron, A, administration needs into the shed. I'm sure administration and other works have a lot more on their, on their, on their platform than they do having to bother with communities in bloom and their access problem. But it was caused by administration.
And it has to be during business hours.
Yeah, and if we, if we go outside of business hours, then we're going to be charged with fee. We're not allowed to enter the compound without somebody present. So-
What did you do with the other administration?
He had access to the compound.
There was never a restriction of that. This is no need. So, and I'm not saying who's right and who's wrong. Well, maybe they don't know that. But I know we can get the ball. I just want it to be an easy-to-go agreement for both parties.
So what happens, you guys plant all these planters, May twenty-ninth, and you can't find anyone to water them, you guys are going to be stuck.
Communities in bloom, I would say, is committed to taking on the one responsibility until we find a person, and we hope we can find a person.
Because last year, you guys found it almost impossible to find. Did you not? It was a struggle, a lot of work. Once you found somebody.
We were lucky-
But it was a different agreement.
It ran blocked in the beginning, and then it was a heat wave in the end. So it was a challenge, but we got there. Then she needed her WCD, and she needed breaks in life. Just different arrangements, right? Different arrangements. And it was goofy in the sense that it didn't exactly, you know, work clean, but it worked. Right? Like, this is, we're trying to figure out new ways. We need to reinvent ourselves to be more efficient for both the town and for CIB. And I will say, the onus on CIB that's here has been quite immense.
You know, it's a difficult year, I mean, with the fires and the droughts. And it's not, it's a tough year. And you should have taken a year off.
But we're not giving up. You know, we're not waving this flag.
Oh, no, no, I'm just saying, it's a difficult year for everybody.
From the town to work through it. And, yeah, we're going to argue along the way, absolutely. But we will come up with a solution, I guarantee it.
Okay, well, thanks for that, Sid, Donna. You want any further comments you want to make or anything?
Uh, no, I, administration doesn't have any problem with the things that's in the fall. We just got a couple residents that wanted to have the shed to the location of the stuff that we did. They have to trade this. There is a comment, start getting a key to the compound. Nobody gets the key of our building to help him. Because there's a water treatment plant there, and it's open. And we have no problem throwing the handy planters in the, or just other. Or spensing off a portion in the back of that fence, I think that's a, it's a rash. There would have to be a cost to that. So I don't think there's a lot of pushback. When we've done an MOA, we're working it. We have no problem working with the fragment, very wonderful work. But there'll be no key given to that compound. Can't take the risk. So all we ask for is that you let us know if that's the ones we can get there during the daytime hours. Otherwise, it's a call. And emails, um, someone's got, or finding someone. You have to do is give us a notice, like, who let you into the site for always the way. Thanks for that.
You can shut them.
So it was just a couple of weeks. Half of it would have been in your mind. So, got your area print in your sign. The delay a little bit on Friday with the barbecue was definitely a time after three at the end of the day. So we're trying to spark our activity. So I'm not seeing. All I'm going to say is, if there are issues with the MOA and stuff, we can party together.
I was just going to say, as simple as that, being in there Monday to Friday, nine to five, when somebody can let us in, sounds like a good solution. But, yes, like Barry indicated, there's garage or stuff because we didn't want to incur extra charges by putting things away after hours and getting access into the compound. But I do like the idea, but I would need a visual, sort of, about turning the shed and fencing it off and creating a gate access.
And we have to look at the lands, and we have to look at the farm.
Yeah, well, if there's an easy access there, it might be a solution.
Just so you know, so you know this light is, more people want to step out of the raw water pond.
What's sharing?
She's had a shed with her own purpose. Here in the front of the one, Thursday, for you. She's coming, coming on.
Is that a fence in there yet?
It is a gated area.
Yeah. Can I go over there?
No.
That's where my brain was.
I'm gated again.
Like, I don't understand where-
It's not a gate, it's not as well-gated as, as old earth. But it's, I'd like you to take the summer, so let's think of the, to think of the pollution. Yes, the town has the residents, track up the pollution, when I have to, perhaps. But there is, it's kind of a public, like, way to help you too. But when we get ready to demolish that water treatment plant, I want you to first of all, and there's a, actually, we have to, it depends on how much equipment. We're going to have the new crane, yeah. Or, champion of boom. Yeah.
Because it is a horse exit, that I suggest administration find that.
I need you, Mr. Rasch, to get this one.
But it's open, it's open, not locked up. Nobody goes into our shed back here, and it's not locked.
Oh, like I say, I encourage you guys to work with administration, you know? That's, I promise, that's right, David, I mean, that's-
The limit between administration and-
Oh, you go ahead.
Uh, what is Donna talking about? Demolishing water treatment plant?
Well, we, that's something that's sitting there for, since two thousand and eleven. And, I mean, it's a liability, and it should be cleaned up. Everything, there's value in there, some of the equipment there. And, yeah. And, you know, somebody gets in there, some kids get in there, anything gets in there. I mean, falls into one of them tanks or anything like that. And, I mean, there's all kinds of, it should be gone. It should be, it's gone.
Is there a direction to look at demolishing process?
You know, like-
I just don't know, I've never seen any of these access, once again. So I don't, I can't even see in my head what that looks like.
It's a giant hole in the ground. It's quite big.
Basically, basically, it's a water treatment plant, with tanks underneath there, pumps and everything in there, and it's-
Where is this? Where's-
It's by the farm center, by, you know? And it's-
By the lagoon, that's, that's-
No, right inside the creek. And that's where everything came and went back. And everything's been abandoned when we went through a new water treatment plant, and it's never been cleaned up. And it's just, it's going to sit there for the next fifty years unless we do something about it.
I don't know if we're going to have to crane here, I don't know if we're going to have to- But I just, my whole premise for this is nothing to do with all this proposition that I have to hate on this. My premise is, I don't want this stuff done. I don't have to worry about it. Our stuff gets damaged, that's our problem. If your stuff gets damaged, you can't function as well as we can. And I don't want the administration to not want responsibility. Of private, uh, equipment and private entities on our town land. So I'm pretty confident we can come up with a direction.
Well, I'll leave it to you guys, and you guys work it. Yeah.
Which is the-
Anything else?
Uh, no.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I do want to speak to council with regard to the trails. But I want to do that in the coming months.
Yeah. Yeah, I just-
Be more valuable within some of our-
You know, and, I mean, the whole thing on this stuff here is, you know, we don't want to, we don't want blindside anybody. I don't think it's fair to come in and just drop all this stuff when we haven't a chance to come up with some answers, right? So I appreciate, you know, this whole time in here and bringing it up, but like I say, it's-
If you don't get allowed in, you come in anyways, right?
That's what I'm saying, yeah, go ahead.
So then Barry was talking about the trails. And we had discussed, Donna was talking about forming a trail committee, which, uh, yes, that's what I was going to say. Okay. So what's the difference between a task force and a committee? Does it still not have to come through council? So what's a task force compared to a committee?
The community engagement, um, from either committee or possible legal. Uh, committee, council, or, we can form a committee if we want to, but if council isn't comfortable with that. So we're looking at, uh, first, we need some engagement so we know what they want with the trails, to know what's going on. Right now, they're dedicating the council, it's all done by environment protection. So they give us a nod, and we do the network, the, under their GCS system of the trail. Send that to them in the next week, and then know if we are filing the public. Well, the reason it's been pointed out is because we got a diversion license approved months ago now, and to do the weak thing, and we moved the thing by itself. And we wanted to, we're doing, operating. I don't want to put a task force together until I have, I didn't realize, so they have it. So I don't want to put a task force together until we have, uh, the, the task force will come together. We'll talk about trails. We'll talk about what they want to see, do they want less rust, do they want this to happen?
Have the, I have not seen anything about it so far.
Is that in?
In the term?
Well, I love a couple of years.
I mean, we know that people have used reformers, and are fine. We have a, so, this is the third.
First of all, and, uh-
This is the third. I may leave one more comment. Don't you mean that Forests has ever been open, has only Forests? That value is including rural residents and the town resident tour. That's what those grants both reflect. Was working and working together in collaboration. So it shows those friendly agents to this one. Tom, of course, it was only one to have engagement from Forests.
Well, we want to try to see if they find out, Mr. Rasch. Uh, a CEO can call the engagement sessions of their residents to find out what they want with their taxpayer.
What was the diversion license that you were fitting?
Our diversion license is we create. And when we have the raw water pond, the sewage pond, we have the raw water pond, secondary pond. The secondary pond, which has been aerobically treated, is safe for release. Safe from the water treatment plant notified, uh, for environment or review. Not really, should we have authorization? And it depends, we release quite a few million gallons a year down the creek into the water. Yes. We have never been questioned on that license. We are a hundred percent on, and, so. And when they notice, we had trails along, across there, they were down there looking. They just asked us what it was about, and they asked the GCS, which we've done. So determine if we are, are reading the public plan. Your beneath my for you, it's okay, you guys are good. Or we could find you. The lottery, I don't think it's going to happen. But we have to protect that diversion license, that separate part that nobody wants.
Big fines involved here to divert that stuff.
That's understandable.
Yeah, no, and I'm glad you asked the question. It's diversion of our, what we call treated brown.
And I've heard you talk about it before, I guess, but I didn't know.
Okay, I see, I see.
I just have a question as well. So I know that you're personally inviting people to join the task committee. That's what I've heard in the community. But have you invited CIB or anybody that actually did work on the trail? Have any of those people come in there?
I haven't personally invited anybody. I put it out in the paper, and I said, we have a committee, if anybody wants to join, welcome. So why would you, why would you sit in question?
That's what?
That was Barry told you.
I think it's, I think it's important that we look at true, uh, without hidden agendas, because there are hidden agendas out there. And we all have parts.
I would invite Barry to be on this task force, because Barry is someone that solely, as a council, I would respect him to be on this, because he's solely ran those trails like ninety percent of his own time and hours and getting grants, and, like, he's a huge asset to our community, and we're trying to push him out, it seems like.
No.
But why would we not invite him? Why? There's no seen reason why he would not be allowed. That's, to me, it makes no sense whatsoever.
So I haven't disallowed any of these moving access.
You have disallowed. You said, nobody that doesn't pay taxes or live in Forests. He does not pay taxes, he does not live in Forests.
We have a committee. The task force, it all appears, we have a committee that we have to do.
I don't think we've ever had a task force with just the town people. We've never had that, like Barry said, we've never had that. That's not true. Would I like to form a what?
Form a resident committee for the trails?
We have. Well, not necessarily all of the way.
Well, we have two trails right now that are in construction. Uh, there are maybe, there are maybe one that will not run. And then maybe another where, that may not run either, that I've got to deal with. And, uh, probably not be suitable. A little landowner, personal landowner association, they're just chatting with me right now. But I don't want to do it. We're going to have a shorter trail. Can't, can't run trails without authorization. Not per, and, no, it's not personal.
No, I'm agreeing, no, it's, but I mean, I mean, I can go walk on anything I want to, unless it's locked off.
Yeah. But I'm also allowed to ask, I'm also allowed, so a lot of times, we residents, to say what do they want for their taxpayer trail, I'm not excluding anybody. If that particular group of engaged citizens says, well, I would invite the folks in the county, I'm not sure. But your taxpayers need to come forward once that's all. Now, if you want to form a committee and run it as a council, both are. But until we get the, I'm saying to you as an administrator, until we get the environment settled and the two mast lanes settled on those two sets of trails. Um, and we got a cleanup to do out there, we got a whole bunch of brush down in there. We got a, we got a fire, a fire to, the first set of trees coming, yeah, probably this week. Yes. So if one's listening, yes.
I just have a question. We haven't fully invested, have we? That's a lot of task orders. I thought it was all a lot of fundraising and grants that needs to be trailed up.
Sure is, but it, yeah, I don't conceive that. But when we put the call out, a lot of people were antipathic. They wanted to stay in the trail, they wanted to do things like BMX stuff. But I'm not saying you have to do anything, it's not my choice. It's about what you folks want. Your choices will be the opposite. I mean, this, that, you want a name, you want a trail going here, you want that trail going there. You want, uh, you want the branding changed. It's all about asking your residents. At the end of the day, I'm obliged to do that. I'm obliged to do that. And your policy is by.
Wow, and then it comes down to why then? I mean, there's huge liability, if you walk on your land and fall into the creek.
We just got a new document today, what did I show you today?
Yeah, about mitigating the risks and, you know. There's, it's huge. And whether or not the previous council wanted the liability, if they didn't want the liability, they shouldn't have allowed trails on their land. Because whether you want it or not, it's there. There, it's your land. So we just-
It was just never, it was just avoided and ignored.
Well, I don't think so.
Huge thing, no?
But Julie, if you do things the way you've always done them, you're going to get what you've always got, which is nothing. Like, you have to be open to change, and you have to be open to the fact that you guys are responsible as a council for the well-being of the people in this town.
We're saying, we're saying, no, it's okay, now we know about it, the liability is there. Okay, you can't plead innocent, plead innocence. But you said it, they made-
Before, it was fine. But you couldn't plead it before.
But I mean, you could say, okay, well, we didn't know, we didn't know. But we know.
No.
So now, when the eyes of the law, you, you can't get away with it.
But volunteers are hard to come by, and we don't want to alienate anybody.
They're really, really, really hard to come by.
We can't get paid.
But we have a law. You say you do. But, no, you say you do, trust me. You say you do, but when it comes to actually having to do the work, you're going to slowly get the deal. I guarantee you that. I'm sad to say it, but I've watched all these groups. And when people actually physically have to do work, they don't really want to do that. They just want to give their opinion.
I think it depends on the tree.
Okay, well, good for you guys if you can get all these volunteers that are chopping the trail.
Is there anything else? Anything else? All right.
Can I just mention there is a tree down on the trail? I know that we've been addressing, okay. All right.
And a motion for a ten-minute recess, and we'll come back to Kevin. John, favor.
Volunteer in the town. I just want to be aware, right? As a person, as a taxpayer, I just am coming for information. Do I have to declare one way or the other?
Probably, it would be nice if people automatically to think you're there to recognize it. You got to go volunteer.
Come on, the CIB.